And Administration Committee meeting. Roll call in place.
Alderman Hartwood.
Here.
Alderman Kurio.
Here.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Smartsky, Matt here. Alderman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Arden.
Here.
Alderman Kevin.
Here.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the committee meeting minutes from February 8th, 2024 for the Finance and Administration Committee.
I'll make that motion. Select it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any corrections or comments regarding that? Are none and then gases? For report and recommendation, we have the fiscal year 2025 budget. Dr. Wilson has a very nice presentation for us.
Thank you, Chairman. So yes, we're going to go through the slide deck that was provided in the packet last Friday, along with the digital copy of the budget that was also provided the week before. So with that, we'll get into it. So we'll go through the overview, kind of the housekeeping stuff as we've done the past few years. The city has six different fund types, the general fund, there's only one of those, so just the general fund, the special revenue funds, those are revenues that are restricted by state statute for certain purposes, for example, the motor fuel tax are restricted to only those things in the compiled statutes that those monies can be used on, things of that nature, the capital projects, that's going to be the CIP, we had that conversation back on January 25th, that discussion at that committee meeting, and then the land acquisition fund is in there as well. The enterprise funds, those are the business type, so it's going to be the commuter parking lot sanitation and the water and sewer fund, internal service fund, that's going to be the SURF, the capital equipment replacement fund, the fleet, then the two fiduciary funds aren't monies that are specifically owned by the city, but we're still the caretakers and have to report out on those, those are going to be your police pension fund and the SSA, the special service area fund. So all of that being said, there are 16 total funds that the city budgets for at this point in time, and this budget has presented five of a proposed increase, 11 have a proposed decrease, most of those are planned drawdowns in fund balance, such as, again, the motor fuel tax does show a pretty significant decrease in fund balances here, however, that's planned due to work on the Elizabeth Drive Bridge and the signalization of Irving and Central. So even though they have negative fund balances, it's not always a bad thing if it's planned and it's accounted for properly. Capital spending, again, we had the CIP meeting back at the end of January committee, and we drew our best to try to align projects when and where possible, and also see grant and alternate funding options as they present themselves throughout the year. So the process, again, as in past years, kind of same as with the CIP, we'll go through each department or fund, they have their own sheet or sheets nicely correlated to the tabs in the budget binder. There are three expanded level item sheets, two are green, which is manager recommended, one is red, I know the page was pink, but we still color red just for effect, which is not manager recommended. We'll try to gain a consensus on each section before moving on, not to say that we can't go back and forth, but it is a little bit smoother if we try to go through it in a linear fashion versus a nonlinear fashion. So again, we'll begin the next few slides, our overview of the entire budget, and then we'll go through, again, kind of as presented, the fund types, general fund, special revenue, capital projects, et cetera. The bottom two bullets, we are here tonight on February 22nd, we'll try to get through as much as possible for the whole thing, and then if we need to come back for a second meeting, that would be March 14th would be the second budget meeting if needed. Going through all funds, revenues, you can see there kind of the year over, year, the budget, and then the proposed for revenues is down a little bit, that's due to a decrease in the intergovernmental revenues, specifically that's related to the $3 million grant that we got for the roadway program through the DCEO, and then, but that was offset an increase in taxes a little bit, but that's why that's down slightly, predominantly due to that, the $3 million grant. The revenue, the projected number does appear about $8 million higher than what was budgeted for, that's related to the $8 million line of credit for the land acquisition that the city participated in a few months ago, so if you take that $8 million out of that 53, you'd be at 45, 674, which is pretty much right on budget. Moving to the bottom screen, bottom of the screen, the expenditures, pretty much the same, same deal with the 52 million there and the projected, that includes the 8 million, so if you take that out, we'd be at about 44 million, which is about 2.5 million below what was budgeted, so, you know, everybody's doing a good job keeping the departments in line, spending in line, projects in line, et cetera. And then the FY '25 number is up largely due to capital, again, there are some bigger expenses in there, such as, you know, the water tower, the civilization, Elizabeth Street Bridge, Elizabeth Drive Bridge, excuse me, things of that nature, and then as we see in a couple of slides, personnel, you know, contracts, city policy, and then the IMRF is what's driving that, there's no new staff this year, specifically no new services, et cetera. So as I just kind of touched on, unless otherwise noted, through the particular department or fund sheets, personnel costs are up just due to increased salaries per city policy or union contracts, healthcare costs this year, based upon the preliminary renewal data we've seen from IPBC, we're going to be flat, which is very helpful this year. IMRF rate for the calendar year went up by 3.11%, and that's largely due, or actually entirely due to the ERI being included, we didn't know that number was coming, we had expected the ERI number to be 3.5%, it actually wound up being 3.26%. So actually, you know, if the ERI wasn't in there, the rate would have gone down a few, a few basis points, so again, a couple, a little bit of good news, it went down organically when the ERI went in, but the ERI was actually less than we had anticipated, which is also, also some good news.
So Alderman Hartwood.
Yeah, Brad, could you explain what the ERI is, and when we expect that to go back down, when that'll cycle up, do we know that?
Sure, so the ERI was the early retirement incentive that the city did a couple of years ago through IMRF, some places, it's still referred to as the five plus five, where it adds five years of service to your, to the math for your pension and five years to your age. Currently, we're expecting it to be paid off in about eight years, it could be a little bit less, I haven't looked at the new amortization schedule since now that we have the rate, but the initial amortization schedule we had was about eight years.
Thank you.
As we're going through the slides, there will be a, you know, a quote unquote reason for an increase or decrease, but it is a non exhaustive list, but it's a notable change, you know, for example, if something changed by 20 or $30,000, we probably noted it, but if the office supply budget changed by $25, probably not going to reference that. But obviously, if you have a question about something, you know, we can certainly go over that, but we're trying to hit the high points and not, you know, get into every single reed of the weeds along the way. And then again, ask questions as we go through the slides, we'll try to do it as linearly as possible, but also acknowledging that, you know, that might not be realistic in all cases. So again, the expanded level items, there were two manager recommended sheets, the drone program and the Star Chase GPS program, those are both for the police department, so when we get to the police department, you know, those will be, have their own slides, and, you know, will be discussed at that point, and then the one not recommended sheet was for some additional seasonal decorations, and that will be in the tourism fund when we get to that portion of the budget. The general fund, going through it, the bullets are the main operating departments, and then the dashes are, you know, effectively the divisions or the subunits of those operating departments. One quick note, you know, the deputy clerk is in the city manager's office, we did consolidate those budgets a number of years ago together, didn't really make a lot of sense for one person and one line item to have its own department, so we did consolidate that into the city manager's office. Then going forward, we did this year break out a little bit the community development, the building maintenance, because it now is more encompassing of all of the facilities in the general fund, not just City Hall, with the opening of the 790 building for public works, we did realign those costs a little bit to kind of try to concentrate and organize the building maintenance costs a little bit better going forward. So right now, as presented, the general fund is projected to end the year with a whopping $567 surplus, you know, it's just kind of how the math worked out, just seemed like an interesting number, but that's what it is. Checks out, yeah. Yeah, so just a couple of notes on the revenues, you know, taxes were down a little bit, licenses and permits were down a little bit, fines, fees and forfeitures are down a little bit, but miscellaneous specifically driven by administrative adjudication fees were up. Expenses, police department was down, streets were down, and CD was up a little bit, but again, you can see expenses are coming in, a couple hundred thousand under what was projected, the budget last year as presented, had the $93,000, $4 budget surplus, and then, you know, with the variance on the far right there, the 92, 437, leaves you with the 567. Moving to the bottom of the page, we have a budget surplus of 143,500, just want to point out that that does include a one-time revenue transfer in from the special service area fund, we'll get to that obviously later, but the last debt payments for that fund are in March of this year, and so next year, after many of the property tax appeals roll through, we will close that fund out and likely move that money into the general fund. So absent that one-time revenue, the general fund is showing a surplus of 24,761, so still, still a surplus, like I said, that 118,000 and change really shouldn't be counted on for core operations, it is a revenue policy of the city, is not to tie ongoing revenues or ongoing operations to a one-time revenue, so it does show 143, but really just from a structural standpoint, it's a little under 25,000 as we're sitting here right now.
Alderman Hartwood.
Did you say tax revenues were down?
Doctor.
Is that?
Yeah.
Real estate tax, sales tax, then do we have a understanding why that went down?
Yeah, so looking through, sales tax was off of budget by about 75,000, and then telecom tax was down a little bit as well.
So is the telecom the bigger culprit?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor Lee.
Brad, so I take it you're looking at the general fund, right? So property tax was right in line, replacement tax was a little over, and then you're about 40,000 over in income tax, then the other two were?
Were down.
The ones you mentioned were down.
Correct.
Okay, please continue.
So going through this year's summary of revenues for the general fund, you can see the taxes are up about 4.5%, some of that is driven by real estate taxes going up, some of that is an increase in income tax, we follow the guidance from the IML, the Illinois Municipal League, based upon what they feel the per capita revenues are going to be, so that did increase a little bit this year. Also, we are projecting a little bit of an increase in sales tax based upon the addition of CIT to the, to the city's rules, and then just some other general, just, you know, minor increases here and there, use tax, things of that nature. License and permits are down a little bit, we did consolidate planner view fees and building permit fees together, if you're looking at the detail sheets, so if you saw that the one went to zero, that, that is true, but it was consolidated in with the building permits. Moving forward to the charges for services, we are seeing a slight decline now in the cable franchise fees as people are cutting the cord and going more to streaming services, so that is starting to affect, not, not super significantly, but it is starting to become a little bit of more downward pressure on your traditional cable fees going forward. Fines, fees and forfeitures are going up related to police department revenues, they were down obviously during COVID, and now we are seeing them kind of get back to, to pre-COVID levels or even a little bit higher in the case of Trax Guard. Investment income, obviously, interest rates are up, which means we're generating more revenue from the monies the city has invested and also in its bank accounts, things of that nature, so.
Alderman Jacob.
Not here, the revenues, we had cannabis tax, we estimated money for that, but that just got passed, so why do we have 20,896?
Yeah, thank you, that's, that's money that, that every municipality gets from the state, we get a small per capita distribution, every, like I said, every city in the state gets that to help with cannabis education and certain other things within the police department.
Thank you.
Please continue, thank you.
The increase in miscellaneous is related to, again, as I kind of mentioned, related to fees, related to admin adjudication, you know, the CD, PD, PMI, they're doing a great job of, of staying on top of those, and good news, bad news is they are generating some, some pretty significant fees in some cases, trying to get things into compliance, and then the interfund transfers, again, that's up again due to that transfer from the SSA fund, so the, the real, I guess the real number, if you take that out, is going to be that roughly 1.2 million, that's the number that, that's really going to be seen going forward. And this is just the written version of the notes. Summary of expenses, again, personnel, that's just largely due to wages and the IMRS, IMRF rate increase, I know I said it was the 3.11, we were at 6.72, so it was just under a 50% increase, so if you're going through the, the line item departments, you will see that IMRF number go up a fair amount, because like I said, we were at 671, and it went up to 3.11%, so just under 50% that rate went up. The increase in contractual, largely due to legal invoices and then the facility maintenance costs, again, with 790 coming online, that's added a new cleaning contract, a new HVAC contract, you know, things of that nature. Capital outlay is up largely related to the two expanded level items within the police department, which we'll get to in a little bit. The decrease in interfund transfers was, we did decrease the transfer to the SURF fund a little bit, which was offset by an increase in the road and bridge contribution to the SURF fund, we'll get into that a little bit more detail later, but that's, that's why that dip is there. Then the increase in other is predominantly related to the increase in the public contribution of the police pension fund based upon the latest actuarial study that was done as of 430 last year.
Alderman Jacob.
Yeah, and the expenditures by department, you had proposed, like for police, 9, 9,72 was 8,497, was that what you were just talking about, or is that because of staffing levels?
Yeah, so personnel for the fiscal year right now, budget versus projected, was down about 140,000, contractual services was down 75,000, commodities, they were down 14,000, and then other expenses, they were right on as well as capital, so it was a little bit of a mix, there was a decrease in personnel, but then there was also a decrease in the contractual and commodity side of their budget as well.
Alderman Messina.
Might be a question for Jeff or Brad, but the other one, are we still outsourcing some of our personnel, specifically like in the building department? Is that reflected in that number?
Mr. Hart.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, it's a, a little bit of a blend depending on current staffing levels on any given day, community development around the whole county, around the whole state is tough these days.
Yeah.
So yeah, it's a little bit of a blend.
Okay, thanks.
So moving into, that's kind of it for the dialogue summary notes for the general fund, so moving into administration, there's actually two slides for administration, this is the summary by expense category. The largest increase obviously is in, aside from personnel, but is in the contractual, it's due to increases in legal, some costs related to HR division, and specifically the increases in the HR division were increased or offset by a reduction in costs relative to IT, we'll get to that in a second, and then capital was related to a decrease in cost related to IT equipment, you may recall last year, we did the, the huge computer replacement program and, and all of that, now that that's done, those costs have really moderated quite a bit, which is nice when you have new stuff that doesn't break all the time, you know, who knew? Going on to the administrative division summary by, by division or, yeah, by division, you see the, the city manager cost, again, that's really driven predominantly all by personnel costs, legal, I guess the good news is, you know, well, bad news, legal's up, good news is, it's because there's a lot of good things going on in town that we just need the attorney's assistance with to get those things off the ground and going, so I guess the legal, like I said, it's, you know, bad news is it's up, good news is it's up for a good reason, that there's growth, development, things of that nature going on in town, it's not up because of negative reasons, I guess. Again, the HR component, again, most of that's due to the property casualty workers' comp insurance, there was an increase in some of the professional services related to the payroll system, however, we increased those costs in our current payroll system, and that came out of the agreement with Tyler Munus, so those, those were again like a teeter totter, so that was pretty much a zero sum there, realigning those costs, and then IT, like I said, the licenses and permits, some of those were eliminated, like we were able to eliminate about 15, $20,000 out of our Tyler Munus contract, some of those were then relocated to HR, some wound up going to PD, so there was a little bit of a realignment of those costs this year, which is why they went down, but again, other budgets, you'll see those go up again, so in some regards, a zero sum, but just, that's how it shook out, and then marketing went down a little bit, you know, Miss Silva, I know there's a couple of things going on, she said we have to bid out, and she's working on contracts and whatnot, so that's, that's pretty much in line with what the costs have been the last couple of years, so we did pull that down a little bit this year.
Alderman Hartwood.
Does there, do we know why marketing went down, is there philosophical reason? Do we tend to do more things now, or would think that marketing would at least stay the same if not? Or did we move stuff around?
So the only thing that's actually really in the marketing division that's presented here on the screen is the design and printing of the newsletter, the costs associated with mailing the newsletter, so.
It's not all inclusive?
Everything that Miss Silva does, no.
So why would we have it in one spot then?
So a lot of the work that she does is special events, which is in the tourism fund, and then the newsletter stuff, like I said, that's presented here, and then some of just the other general admin work that's done upstairs is really part and parcel to the city manager office portion of the budget. Moving on to community development, again, their budget's up 42,436, and 41,460 of that is related to personnel, may note on this is no notable changes, again, like I said, there's, you know, a couple of things moved a few dollars here and there, nothing too significant, Alderman Messina's question that the manager answered a little bit before, you'll see in years past, their professional services number for outsourcing was a little bit higher, and their salaries were lower, so now that their salaries are higher, those pro services are a little bit lower, just based on the staffing levels, so.
Alderman Hartwood.
Yeah, so Mr. Roberts, are we staffed up now? I mean, do you not look?
Mr. Roberts.
I think we are.
Yeah, we're, we're fully staffed up presently, but.
I was just wondering, I asked you answers, military question.
Please continue.
Yeah, so this is, in last year's budget, this was kind of rolled into, to the CD budget, but again, we tried to consolidate all of the costs of the city's facilities in the general fund, so that being City Hall, the 720 building, which was the former main operating unit of public works, it's now the garage and some storage, and then the 790 building, wanted to get all those costs together, you know, so if we need to do a bid for HVAC or for cleaning services or for the med kits or whatever, all those costs would be in one place and kind of under one, under one roof, if you will, to make it easier to be sure that we were including everything that needed to be included in that, so you will see some reduction in certain costs, specifically in the public works administration budget for their maintenance agreements and some building maintenance, which were then moved into here, so this includes a little bit of new contractual obligations for the cleaning and the HVACs over at 790, but then also just some relocation from the public works administrative department of the 720 building costs into here, so, but this is truly more representative of what we're spending on the maintenance and personnel and contracts for the city facilities.
Alderman Hartwood.
So, not sure if this is where I asked the question, but, so is this where all the contracts are kept, you know, going back many years, we tried to have a contract management person to keep an eye on, capital projects, you know, to look at, and we have two-year warranties on roads and, and different stuff, just to be more proactive, to look at and go, hey, maybe we walk the street six months before the contract's up to check out, and I know that at one point we talked about some asset management, so this is a two-part question, is asset management part of the new ERP system that we have? So one, are all the documents, is this where everything's housed, and is there anybody central control over that, and two, is this now covered under our enterprise system as asset management?
It's like three or four questions in there, that's good.
No, tell me really two.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
I guess you could bifurcate, you know, a couple, you know.
Oh, that's what I'm gonna, I'm gonna bifurcate some stuff, yeah, yeah. So relative to, like I said, the HVAC contract, the cleaning contract, a couple of other things, yes, they're all going to be living here, the question about the warranties and kind of walking the street before they're, they're done and whatnot, I would have to defer to, to Mr. Lang on that one for, for tracking the warranties and whatnot, however, we do have asset management in the new ERP system for the garage and a few other areas, and you also may recall during the strategic plan, we mentioned that new, the stamp program that we were launching, which we're very close to having that done, there's a couple, a couple of things we're working out, so there is going to be a lot of curating of those types of things in there as well, so this is for the, the contracts, for the outsourced contracts, but then there's going to be one or two other places where the things you're asking for are going to kind of live and breathe. Relative to oversight, these contracts, the HVAC contract, et cetera, that is going to be overseen specifically by a person going forward, and then those different warranties and contracts, I would believe, again, I would have to defer to Mr. Lang, but I would believe that there would be more sites specifically, we'd have somebody in water overseeing warranties on water products and somebody in streets, you know, overseeing streets, things of, of that nature. We'd have somebody in water overseeing warranties on water products and somebody in streets, you know, overseeing streets, things of that nature.
Well, do we, do we have a time ready for that and is that underway? Is that being put together now?
Yes, yeah, it's been put together. We're kind of fine tuning it myself and Miss McElire. It was actually done, roughed in before the CIP, which is how we had some of those costs for the City Hall costs. To be fair, I don't, I don't know that it's ready for public consumption yet. That's what I'm saying, we're still kind of refining some of the, the points, but we're, we're close.
Well, as long as we're working through all our prior conversations, CIP and everything kind of comes back to this area of discussion and how we handle it. So I'm just checking in to make sure that we're kind of pushing to the center to get this all consolidated. Sounds like we're.
Yeah, and I think the, the addition of that public works analyst has been pretty pivotal to kind of pushing a lot of this stuff forward, so she's doing a great job.
Thank you.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, not sure if this is the place either, but I know years ago, we talked about bringing on a facilities guy that just like maintained the heating and air conditioning in the different buildings and stuff. I, I know we, we kind of nixed that and didn't do anything with that, but we've been kind of tracking somewhere that if we would have did that, we would be saving some money or, you know, would be, are we spending more money than we need to on all these services because we don't have that person? I don't know if Alan or somebody tracked that, but I know we talked about that maybe two, three years ago.
Yeah, no, I'll say, yeah, that was, I believe, I believe that was pre-COVID and then it kind of died out of the vines.
Yeah, it was actually approved in the, of budget of the COVID year and then for the reason of the pandemic, we weren't able to hire anyone, it just kind of fell by the wayside. But some of those administrative services that were going to fall to that position, like the contractual management for the facility maintenance items, have gone to the public works management analyst. So there may be a need in the future for somebody more on the labor side of things to come and just do, you know, the routine maintenance stuff at all of our facilities. That may be coming down the road, but as far as the administrative aspect, those have been absorbed by the public works management analyst.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you. Now, moving on to the finance department budget. Again, contractual services are up just due to some pricing increases, a little bit of additional money in the training budget. And then other, again, the, the large increase in the other miscellaneous budget was we did include a budget amount of five thousand dollars for the community donations. The previous two fiscal years, we had spent five thousand dollars in community donations specifically for the food pantries. So since we had two years of actuals with those in there, we did put that in there. Just again, trying to kind of, you know, if you're looking at the trends over the last few years, that seemed to be something that had been done, and so we wanted to include that this year. Now again, we're not committing to doing that, but like I said, the past few years, it did look like something that had been, been done. So we thought, trying to take a, you know, an honest approach to, we did budget that five thousand in there for, for that. Not to say that it has to go to that, but we wanted to put money in there in case, in case that came up again. Moving on to the police department. In the contractual, largely related to maintenance agreements. That was offset by a reduction in tracks guard. Chief Sito was able to reach out to the tracks guard company and kind of renegotiate at the back end of, of that deal and save the city some money. The capital does include the two expanded level items. And then again, like I said, the increase in other was due to the police pension contribution.
Alderman Messina?
He said, he worked up to this, to extend that or does not?
It does, it does, yeah.
Alderman Hartwood?
That, well, maybe Brad has here too, but maybe the chief. How many, how many officers are we down to fully staff?
We did six, right? Six, five? Okay, five.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have our first green sheet, which is the drone program. Chief Sito put a lot more words in the narrative than would fit on the slide, so I tried to take the salient points from his write-up and presented them here this evening. And any questions for this item would have to defer to the chief if in answering those.
Before we get to that, Brad, I think you mentioned it already, but so on the maintenance agreement, that's just, that extra was mostly for the cameras, right? That huge number, the one nineteen.
Where are we reading?
Page four, sixty-two. So it's flock, cameras, hexagon, frontline, right? The increase is strictly for the cameras, right?
So the difference between twenty-four and twenty-five, geez, was about seventy-four thousand dollars. Sixty-one thousand of that is related to the flock cameras. But this is a breakdown of the whole thing. So sixty-one is the flock, thirty-five thousand is the hexagon, and then the left of frontline, planet, scheduling software, all the other ones kind of make up the, the remaining, you know, twenty thousand dollars. So, but the, the big, the big hitters in there are definitely the flock and then the hexagon software, the CAD and RMS system for the police department. No, 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 I'm good.
Alderman, are you?
Since you brought up the flock, maybe for the chief, you can answer this, but Bensonville just added six more flock cameras, I believe, last month they approved it and they stated their chief got a, a grade from the attorney general for eighteen thousand dollars. Is that something we already got in the initial flock order? Or is that something might be available to us with this addition?
So sensitive, so just.
Chief?
So I'm, I'm not aware of any grant that Bensonville was awarded for that, but it's certainly something that we can look into.
Thank you.
Looking for questions, comments, or guidance on the drone program? If not, we'll move on, but I presume there's a problem, question or two?
My guidance would be to move forward with the city manager's recommendation based on the compliance that it's going to meet and based on the overall benefit and the minimal cost. That would be my recommendation.
Alderman, are you?
I know when we were talking about this, I believe that CIP, we wouldn't own them previously, but in this situation, we would own the drones, it would be ours, or is this not the same?
Chief?
Yeah, I think, I wasn't here, but I think this came up during strategic planning. And these, we would own these drones.
Okay.
Mayor, please?
So it's gonna be two, not one. Is there a reason for two versus just only having one, I mean?
Yeah, our research, we feel that we would benefit from having two. One of them would be higher quality thermal imaging used for missing persons and stuff like that. And then a smaller one for other smaller incidents that we wouldn't have to necessarily deploy the larger drone.
Alderman, you're good. Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, I'm a hundred percent in support of this, but did have two questions. With the airplanes and things, I'm assuming we could only go a certain height or do we have to let the FAA know that we're gonna be flying a drone for a search or whatever we're doing?
Chief?
Yeah, I believe for planned events that we'll have to make them aware if we're doing it for the parade or Prairie Fest, pre-planned events. But the pilots have to be licensed and trained, receive FAA certification so that they're, they're compliant with all the height requirements due to the airport location.
Alderman?
Yeah, just the next question. How many officers will be trained as a pilot? Six? Okay, and will we eventually train more people or it's gonna be just the six?
Chief?
I think initially, we're hoping to do the six that would allow two per shift. So in the event that hopefully at all times, one pilot would be available here on duty.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, are you?
I'm no drone expert, but can these also be used to create like marketing videos for the properties we have for sale too? Like multipurpose or is that not a thing or these totally different?
Chief?
I don't see why not, I think we could probably utilize it for that.
I have a question too. How long is the license valid for? If I get a drone license, do you have to renew it every four years or how does that work?
I believe the drones have individual license for the drones and it's a two-year renewal.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Hartwood?
I'm feeling a little outdated. Are there any liability issues with the drones?
Chief?
Does that come up?
I have not heard of any. Basically, if you have an expectation of privacy and we're going to be invading that privacy, we have to obtain a warrant to utilize it for that purpose?
Well, like I was just speaking liability, not privacy, but my next question was gonna be privacy, so that one's answered. I mean, obviously, things can happen, right? The thing falls out of the sky and hits the, mean the hat, I won't hit Peter in the hat because we'll think I'm picking on him. Hits me in the head, right? I sue you, so has, has there been any issues, especially with us being close to the airport? You know, you're flying, wind takes it, airplane flies a little lower than we thought it was gonna be flying. Do you know of anything? I have to confront if anything, I try to find it.
I, I have not heard of any of those scenarios, but I would presume that if we had some type of error or malfunction, that yes, that we would incur some liability if something were to happen.
Alderman?
And I did read it up on some stuff, there's certain conditions, you guys just throw up in here. So there's usually preliminary where that is new, there's like assessments, I think was the word, right? So you get not use those six individuals to be trained on what is safe conditions and what are not safe conditions, if I remember right. I'm not speaking for you, but I think that's right, right?
Yeah, that, that is correct. Those individuals would have to be, they basically get licensed to be a drone pilot and they're licensed by the FAA, they receive training on what circumstances that they should be utilizing this equipment.
Alderman Jacob?
This might be a silly question, but let's say we're doing a search for a missing child or something and in the meantime, the drone and we happen to catch, see a carjacking going on. Would we be able to prosecute, I mean, would we be able to prosecute because we caught that on drone camera? Or no, because we're looking for a child, a missing child?
Chief?
Yeah, I mean, to my knowledge in that scenario, you're coming across a crime in progress. I don't see why you wouldn't be able to utilize that tool.
Alderman? So doing.
Well, yeah, because this is an expanded item.
Yeah, I would say it, it's included in the numbers already. So in the past, we've just done it as a negative confirm. So if you want to remove it, then we would need direction to do that, but otherwise it's already included, so. It's a, yeah, try not to use that one. Oh yeah, next up, we have the Star Chase GPS. Again, I tried to do as good a job as I can is in getting the, the high points on the screen here for everybody. And again, I would have to defer to the chief for any technical questions on this particular program.
Mayor, please?
I take it we're getting three because one for each shift again, or?
Yeah, I'm requesting three because right now, our minimum staffing requirement on the street is a sergeant and three patrol officers. And the hope is that if you do have a pursuit, you don't know which of those vehicles is gonna be involved. Obviously, with this item being a handheld launcher, it's gonna be similar to other officers assisting like they would with stop sticks. The pursuing officer is not gonna be the one deploying this equipment.
Mayor, please?
Yeah, the first I heard about this, we have DMMC mayor's meeting on a Saturday morning. Somebody asked a question about police chases and whatnot. And we got into this and I'm like, what's that? Couple, couple had them, most did not, or didn't know about them. That's when I left you a message and you said, oh, by the way, it's gonna be in the budget. Okay, that'll be interesting. So my question is, I tried to ask you just before the meeting. So if somebody, if I'm chasing somebody going eastbound, basically then you guys are radioing ahead to try and get somebody in place to, because it's not gonna be the one driving or doing the chase, right? I take it?
Chief?
Correct, it's not gonna, the one deploying this technology is not gonna be the officer that's pursuing at the time. It's gonna be somebody that he's radioing ahead or it's gonna be us assisting other jurisdictions. We've recently had a lot of chases coming down Route eighty-three from, from the south off of two ninety. And we have officers that'll stage at eighty-three in Alt Meadows to try to assist those agencies.
And from. So if somebody's trying to get away, I'm sure they're not doing the speed limit. And the officer's basically gonna take a shot at this car, hits the car next to him or, or misses completely, hits somebody walking their dog on the, is it gonna?
On eighty-three?
Well, it could be on Irving Park, I mean.
We were on eighty-three.
Or it could miss and go through someone's house.
I'm just curious, I, I don't know, was it like, not even a two-minute conversation? I'm just like, really, they have it? I'm like, so, um, everything, like the liability question, right? This, everything's got it.
Chief?
So if, if we hit somebody else's car, we would hopefully know that we hit the wrong car and we would try to track down that car and make sure we didn't damage that vehicle. Hitting a dog, hopefully we won't hit a dog while we're trying to do this.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just thinking it, because I, I think only two communities actually had it. And one of them did say they actually did work on one occasion. The other one, they really hadn't used it, so that's why I'm asking.
Uh, so the, the biggest one in DuPage County that I'm aware of is Oakbrook, who has deployed this for their vehicle mounted and their handheld mounted. And we've been told that they've had success, more success with this than failures when they've tried to deploy it.
Mayor?
So you said vehicle mounted? So what, the officer has a trigger in the car like James Bond or something?
Uh, he does, that is an option, that's a rather expensive option. We looked into it and in order to outfit every squad car with that vehicle mounted option, you're looking between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars.
Alderman Messina?
I think you kind of answered it. We're going for the, not the yoke mounted, we're going for the portable ones, right? And the handheld, right? And I think someone said it well, I, it was on Channel Five News, I think I even sent you that one. That minimal cost, not that you would want to do it in vehicles, maybe not at any point soon, but he nailed it. What's the cost of a lawsuit, right? So thinking, I know you doomsday, you like to look doomsday all the time. So thinking of like what that could, what could that have been? I'm not gonna digress about my own situation, but yeah, maybe if somebody would have shot in Bensonville, maybe he would never made it across eighty-three, maybe have killed multiple people or gone through my house. So I've also seen Oakbrook, right? And they do use that with success quite a bit, from what I'm told. I know Bill Park's also looking into it, that's Rivas, right? I mean, to me, it's a matter of time, maybe because it's so close to me, I just get stunned by every time. But I mean, it's literally, I was trying to find the numbers of the searches, I mean, in twenty twenty-three, but it is out of hand. And now it's getting out of hand with all, even like the retail thefts that are happening. So there's like any odd reason for somebody to take off in DuPage County, for whatever reason, is happening. So anyways.
Alderman Jacob?
So how many squad cars do we have out at one time?
Chief?
So at a minimum, we have a sergeant and three officers, so that's four squad cars at a minimum on a shift. There are days that we will have more, depending on who's off on benefit time.
Yeah, I guess my question would be what, instead of three, why wouldn't we do like four or five? So every, every officer on shift has one? Because if you, you happen to be on patrol, which you're not, but say you are and you have one, obviously, you're not gonna be able to deploy it and hopefully there's two other officers that are available. But if you have four other officers on shift and every one of them has one, we could, you know, so I'm just saying, maybe we should have four or five versus three, wouldn't that be a better option?
Chief?
Being that it's a new technology, I'm comfortable with, with three. Being that if we do have four on the street, one of those four is gonna be the one. Being that if we do have four on the street, one of those four is gonna be the one that's pursuing the vehicle. They may or may not have signed it out for their vehicle, but also taking into consideration the overall budget, we're trying to limit what we're asking for.
Okay. Alderman Artwood?
Thank you. So, I have, it sounds like a great idea. I have issues, you and I have talked. That's, I mean, it's, maximum distance is 40 feet from everything I ride, so 30 to 40 feet, which means you have to chase and/or get in front of that vehicle, right? So, that's logistically a big thing to do. I mean, you compared it to spike strips and laying that out. I mean, that's not a small feat either, radioing ahead, getting another car. To the mayor's point, the guy's going 70 miles an hour, you gotta be 10 miles up the road with the spike strip. All this happens in seconds. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. I'm just laying it out for myself, trying to wrap my head around it, how somebody's gonna go to their car, grab this, deploy ahead of time, get there, just... And you got the 40-foot thing. I just can't get over the, you know, that you gotta be 40 feet away to deploy that thing. Can you... I mean, I know you told me, is it Oakbrook or Oakbrook Terrace? Which one are we talking about?
Oakbrook.
Oakbrook. So, they've had success? Is that, like, they tracked two cars, five cars? 50% of the cars? Do we know what that number is?
Chief.
I mean, it sounds like a good thing. I like the idea. I just, you know, can't get past the 40-foot limitation.
Follow-up?
Yeah, I don't have specific numbers from Oakbrook on how many they've attempted to deploy and how many were successful in deploying. But it is just another tool that, yes, you will have to be prepared, you will have to radio ahead, you will have to set up knowing that that vehicle's coming that way. But to me, the 40-feet maximum is a better option than a spike strip where an officer's maybe putting himself in greater danger, getting closer to that pursuit, risking getting hit by the vehicle.
Right. So, follow my thought. And I would agree with that. So, obviously, I don't want any of the officers to get hurt, but bringing the officer within 40 feet of a fleeing vehicle at 70 miles an hour, who knows what that guy's gonna do? You gotta be pretty close to fire that shell, right? And try to hit a target. So, off angle, you're probably, thing's gonna glance. So, you either gotta be perpendicular, I would assume, or pretty close to hit that. So, in my mind, I see issues possibly with that. And I'm going to Alderman Jacob's point, then, based on what you just said, wouldn't it make sense that there was one in every patrol car? Because then, you have to take... The guy that has it in his patrol car is the furthest guy away from the action, and then therefore, makes it ineffective altogether. So, I'm not looking to go crazy and spend more money than we have to, but under the circumstances, if we talk this up through and kind of vet it out, given its limitations, I would think that more of them would be better to have than less of them to give them a fighting chance of working.
Chief.
Yeah, I agree. And if funds weren't an issue, I would request that we outfit every squad car with a vehicle-mounted option. It really just comes down to the cost involved in doing that.
Well, but, so, to the, if I can follow up, to the vehicle-mounted one, that's where then you actually have to chase the guy, right? You're either gonna be coming at him in a T-bone, right? Which I'm assuming would be a good maneuver, or chasing him, which brings us back into compliance. So, the handheld, or back into, you know, pursuits that we're trying to get away from, because you gotta get within 40 feet of the guy, to fire the one in the cock, right?
Chief.
So, the way this... You're chasing him no matter what. There's a reason that you're pursuing him. They committed some crime that was enough to require a pursuit to be initiated. This isn't gonna be, oh, I spotted this car, it won't stop for me, it's going westbound on Irving, hope it comes your way. You actively have an officer pursuing that vehicle at the time, where you're then having a secondary officer get involved to try to tag the vehicle.
That's good. Mayor, please.
You got something else?
I'm good.
So, I wasn't aware of the 40-feet thing. So, bad people do bad things. They're gonna get wind that we're outfitted with these rifles, or whatever you wanna call them. They see an officer on the street, they're gonna try and run him over. Kinda, I know, I'm the, always looking at things bad. Well, if they see somebody with a rifle, they're gonna try and make sure they don't get tagged, right? I don't mind, listen, I don't mind trying it, and maybe the best way to do it is put them on the cars, or at least we can at least see with three how that works. Maybe that might be the option to go eventually.
Alderman Lucina?
Our officers go to the shooting range, right? Different ranges, different, they shoot from different ranges, right? With different guns, rifles, right? 40-foot? Maybe he can't shoot, or I can't shoot from that distance, but what's, is 40-foot a pretty typical shot for a trained officer?
Chief.
Well, there's, this is new technology, there's gonna be training required, and there's gonna be repetition required. And part of the maintenance agreement is, we're not paying per tag, they're unlimited with the maintenance agreement. And I envision we will have, just like Oakbrook, successes and failures when we are trying to deploy this in the field. Again, you're trying to shoot a moving vehicle, it may be 70, 80 miles an hour. It's just another tool to help us hopefully not have to continue pursuing in a high-speed chase.
Thank you.
Alderman Jacob?
What are the cost of, I mean, it looks like they're roughly about $4,000 apiece. What's the cost for the vehicle ones, for the actual?
Chief.
So, again, with the vehicle ones, I would have difficulty recommending just to get three and put it on three vehicles, because we have 12 different vehicles, and you never know which vehicle out there might be involved in the pursuit. So, if we're gonna do a vehicle-mounted option, I would request that we do it on all the vehicles, because how do you know that that vehicle that's outfitted with this is gonna be available in that pursuit, or close by, or the initiating vehicle? And the overall initial one-year startup cost to outfit all of our fleet is, you're looking in the $90,000 range.
Follow-up?
Yeah, well, I mean, what would the cost be to just have one of these portable ones in every squad car?
Chief.
How many squads?
It only has to be per shift, we don't have to outfit... We got five guys on the street, then we need five...
Or six, right? Seven, something.
If you wanted, you had to run it around, it looks like around $4,000 per unit. So, you know, if you wanted to do five, just add an additional $8,000 to it. I mean, generally, the most we run at a time is a sergeant and five on heavy days. So, you might have six squad cars out on the street.
Follow-up? Are you good?
Well, I guess, I mean, if I was gonna make a recommendation, I would say we have at least five.
Alderman Smarski?
Yeah, chief, go back to Alderman Lucina's question. Prior military, me being prior military, 50-foot is standard pistol range, correct? For us also?
Yeah, I mean, it all depends. If you're talking about your pistol, your rifle...
Rifle's 100 yards.
This is on an AR-style mount. It's a GPS tag. It's not traveling at the same velocity as a round. So, it's gonna take us getting trained up on the equipment, testing the equipment. Well, there's gonna be some similarities, I think it's gonna be a lot different.
Follow-up? Alderman Artwood?
Yeah, for clarity, I'm not questioning any officer's ability to hit a target at 50 feet, and we can throw that one off the table. This is a different type of weapon, different velocity, different range, and it's firing a canister versus a bullet. I mean, it's completely different, and it brings the officer within 40 feet of the action, and the action happens to be a speeding car. So, I just raising some questions. I'm not trying to eliminate it. I think it's a good idea. If I could, I'd go home tonight and try to figure out how to get it to fire 150 feet effectively, and I would probably be happier with the weapon there. But I would be more in favor of Alderman Jacob's adding more, so that we had one, and I think that would help us logistically.
Alderman Lucina? Do you have a question?
Looking to you, sorry.
Okay. Mayor, please.
Honestly, I think we go with the three, as the chief has recommended. See how they work. And you know what? If they're really, working really good, you can come back and say, hey, you know what? We've done this, this and that, and we can add. Because I don't think, if we buy three more, we're not gonna get a deal, right? We getting a discount if we buy three more? No. So, at least then, we're trying, right? Trial and error.
Alderman Lucina?
I haven't, I haven't remembered now. Yes, basically that, right? Like, creating this as a pilot, like, this is life-saving, so like, is there a way to actually test this and say, like, this time, we use like, scripts, right? Scripts versus the GPS dart? Like, have they done that, like, to compare?
Chief.
I don't have any data on whether they've deployed. I think it depends on each individual scenario and the situation.
Follow-up?
I'm just gonna assume, you can tell me now. I'm assuming for like, the third, second, third community, like, I would imagine they probably be giving us a little bit more white glove? See, like, the days, once somebody does it, and it does well, everybody, firestorm. Do you have offered that? Is that something we go to them and say, hey, we really, we'll be your giddy, not giddy pigs, but you know, we'll have to promote it, things like that? Do you think they'd be open to that?
So, my, talking with the company, they've had this version available for about 18 months, and they have hundreds of departments across the country that are customers of theirs. Some have opted to be references, Oakbrook one of them. They're in DuPage, that's why we reached out to Oakbrook. But I, we've gotten the best pricing that we're gonna get, and it's out there, it's being used nationwide, it's just not readily used right now in DuPage County.
Alderman Artwood?
Yeah, do we under, do we know how many Oakbrook? Switch them off.
Sure.
If I remember correctly, there's only two shoulder-mounted ones right now, and five on the vehicles. What they're trying to do now is transition over to the handheld units, though, and get more of those involved.
Because they probably deem those more flexible, would you say that?
Yeah.
And obviously, less expensive.
Correct.
So, again, I renew that they're having success, and they have seven, right? I think it gives us a better chance to have a positive outcome if we had a couple more of these, so that we have them in the cars. I mean, I don't know how they deploy them, you know, are all seven out on one shift? I don't know any of that data. I'm just saying that, given its limitations and what we're gonna use it for, to have a positive outcome, I think that having at least five would be exponentially better than just having the three and hoping we have the people in the right place at the right time to affect the stop or tagging, whatever way you wanna phrase that.
To the chief's point, I mean, he said we don't really have five vehicles out on the road at any given time, it's free. Right? So, and we can add later, right? Chief?
Yeah, so, at times we do. At times, we have five vehicles out on the road, our minimum is our, we have four vehicles out on the road. There's some times, we might have six or seven vehicles out on the road. Again, initially, when I was looking at this, researching this, I was gonna go with two. Then I figured out, all right, if we have a minimum of four squads on the road, let's have three of them have this available in their car. That gives us a good outcome to have one of those units involved. If you wanna put one in every squad car, I'm not gonna turn it down. But I also think it is new technology, and maybe the best is to see how these work, because if we put them in every squad, and maybe we don't have a single deployment next year, I'm gonna be answering questions about why didn't we deploy these. So, I'm comfortable with three. That's my recommendation. If you wanna give us more than three, I would be happy to take it.
Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, since I was saying five, two, maybe we do four, because you said, sounds likely we'd have four squads out there, so for an extra $4,000 to give this a fair chance, you know, I do think that we should give you guys a fair chance to try this thing out.
Yeah, it's about $4,700 apiece.
Forty-seven hundred.
Thirty-nine twenty.
Forty-six forty, if you just do the math, straight-line the math. Forty-six forty, straight-line.
Yeah. Yeah, because there's maintenance agreement, the education and training, so I figure you're gonna train more people then, right? Or is that, the training include everybody? Sorry, you know what?
Chief.
So, the training includes to train the trainers, so the company will train two officers who get certified as trainers. They come back here, they will train the entire department.
Yeah, okay. Chief Inless.
Alderman Curielli?
The canisters are usable, correct?
Chief CEO?
Uh, yes. With the maintenance agreement...
Is there a cost to refurbish them?
So, the maintenance agreement is a yearly cost of $480 per launcher. The GPS tags are provided, that are provided are unlimited with the maintenance agreement. That also includes the GPS tracking software, batteries for the units, and any micro-gas compressors for the units, when those gas compressors run out.
Thank you.
Anything else? Alderman Jacob?
Just one more question. You brought up software, so if we have three or four, is every squad car gonna have the software if these are deployed? Or is, how does that work with the software?
Yeah, there's a website that the officer's gonna log into, right in the cars. Dispatch at ACDC can also log in. The company's also in the process of developing an app for smartphones.
Alderman Lucina?
Kind of laughing to myself, but anything's possible these days, I guess. What is the key? Not that whatever happened here, but some other departments, some idiot playing around, right? Like this, I mean, kinda like a taser, right? Like, I wanna play around and haze the new officer or joke around, like, I laugh about it, it probably could happen, like, is there like, a way to stop? Like, would you know if somebody actually shot the GPS guy?
Chief CEO?
Yeah, I mean, we would have an inventory of the darts on hand, and we would be able to figure out when they were used.
Okay. Alderman Artwood?
So, not to prolong this, but if the chief's happy with it's three, then I'm happy.
Happy?
No. Four? I would say four.
Somebody making a motion for that?
Alderman Lucina?
Three, if I heard you correctly. So, there's usually at least three and a sergeant, maybe occasionally four squads and a sergeant.
Or six.
Or even, or six, sorry. My point is, no, that's out. But usually, sergeants usually later, right? They're not in the heat of things, right? They're usually supporting the officers on site, is that fair?
It all depends. It may be the sergeant that's the one initiating the pursuit. We've, you know, and that's happened last year, where the sergeant is the primary one initiating the pursuit. So, the request for three is, again, with our minimums, ideally, they're not gonna be kept in a squad car, they're gonna be checked in and checked out, depending on what car those officers drive that day.
Alderman Smarski?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to keep it at three as a pilot program and expand it as needed. Fair motion.
Need a real call?
A real call, please.
Well, I thought if we don't have to do anything...
But some wanna go higher, so I'm just curious.
Well, but we didn't get a vote to go higher.
Okay.
Okay. We're good.
Okay, nobody's...
No, we're good. The spending of the money is to expand it as needed after a pilot program. You want to put a date on it, sunset?
No, I know.
He can just come back if he wants to respond.
It's up to the chief. It's up to the chief.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on, we have the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. Again, we, we did a little realignment between the personnel and contractual services line item for how that secretary was being accounted for and paid. Really, that's a zero sum, just literally moved it from one line arm to the other. And the increase in the other category is this year there was a sergeant's test, so we did have to account for the costs related to the sergeant test in this year's budget.
Yeah, earlier when we were on the police, it talked about training, when the police officers go to the academy, is that out of here or is that out of training from the police, from the other fund?
So, we, we initially are charged for the training for the police academy and we are then reimbursed by Let's Be once that academy is completed.
So, it's basically free tests.
Good, follow? Okay, thank you.
Going to the Public Works Administration, kind of, I guess, the, the big change in this one is this year, in contractual services, this year's operating budget, we have costs related to, we call it senior services, that seemed like the most clever and reasonably appropriate name, which includes the senior grass cutting and the senior snow plowing. Previously, those had been included in the CIP. Last year, not a month ago, but thirteen months ago, it was asked during the CIP meeting why those in capital if we could never capitalize it and that was a completely spot on analysis and so we did move that to the operating budget this year. And, you know, that was, I think, we did add some money for that, but then, as I mentioned, those maintenance agreements for the HVAC went on moving to that facilities account, so that's why the contractual account didn't go up quite as significantly due to those senior services because it was offset by those maintenance agreements moving over a division. Other than that, there's really nothing of any great significance in the PW admin budget. Streets, really the only thing in here is the increase in capital, is a new utility locating device for the streets division, I believe that's probably mostly really too electrical for the streetlights. Other than that, again, nothing, nothing very significant in streets this year. Vehicle maintenance, just slight increase in, you know, commodities cost, fuel and the maintenance of the vehicles that the street, vehicle maintenance garage uses to drive around town and perform maintenance activities. That is the end of the general fund. Moving into the special revenue funds, again, we mentioned there's quite a few of them, so, they're presented here in summary form, road and bridge, water and fuel tax, tourism, narcotics forfeiture, and then TIFs one, two, and three.
Related, the TIF district one, two, and three, if you go online, community development, look up the TIF districts, only just that one shows up. Two and three, please.
Moving forward, the road and bridge fund, one thing here, I kind of referenced this when going through the high level summary for the general fund, we did increase the transfer to SURF in the road and bridge fund, allowing us to reduce the transfer from the general fund a little bit, reason being, if you look at the fleet schedule in the SURF fund, the, the trucks that these replacing, which are predominantly the plow trucks, that's about what they cost now without bidding, so, we're just increasing this transfer to align with what the vehicles that they're replacing are actually costing us now, so just, really just aligning the, the cost with the transfer. Water fuel tax funds, again, this was, you know, planned drawdown to three forty, was related to the Elizabeth Drive Bridge and a little bit of the signalization of Irving Park and Central, the very significant one point nine million, about one point seven, one point seven five of that is related to the signalization of Irving and Central, which we are expecting to begin to work on and complete this fiscal year, obviously subject to change, but that's the plan as of now, and then the remainder of that one point nine is related to continued work on the bridge and then a little bit of the bike path as we have to do the match for those couple of grants.
Alderman, Smarsky?
Is there no grants for safety improvements for the intersection? Has anybody looked into that for Central and Irving, the signalization?
Yeah, I mean, if we could look, I don't know if Mr. Lang has anything, but I don't believe just for a signal, there's anything, I don't know if, if there's anything else we would add that maybe we would qualify, but, you know, Mr. Lang and probably Mr. Bearis have both been looking at that, I don't, nothing that I've heard of.
Thank you, so there are grants for traffic safety improvements, however, state routes such as Illinois Route nineteen are typically excluded from those grant opportunities.
I get nineteen, but one of the streets is our street, Central.
The intersection is controlled by the state, thus it's the state controlled intersection.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please continue.
Sure. Thank you. Tourism fund, obviously, this has been talked about a fair amount the last few months, the fund balance situation with the tourism fund being negative, which does violate the city's fund balance policy. So, there's the, there was a pretty expansive write-up in the budget message, I believe it was page seven of the document, page four of the budget message, page four of the overall PDF, kind of eliciting what's going on here. I guess, you know, the, was it the fourth bullet? You know, we, we need to establish some type of plan to get this going, it doesn't need to be, you know, a one-time silver bullet or a one-time panacea for, for the entire situation, but, you know, staff would be looking for either some direction to get things moving in the right direction or, you know, again, depending on how, how involved the conversation might be, don't wanna belabor it and, you know, yeah, but we're looking for some direction to, to try to get things turned around here.
Mayor?
Yeah, Brad, so, looking at this fund, right, and we do a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer to the general fund. So, I know I called you last night on the SURF fund. If we go to the SURF fund, I asked you, what's our goal, what, what are we trying to, I know we were trying to get ahead on the SURF fund and all this stuff and I see we, we ended with over three million dollars last year and I go, are we trying to go higher? Can we go lower? Those are my questions and my thing is, if we don't do the transfer from the tourism fund, but the general fund transfers a hundred and seventy-five thousand into this SURF, I looked at, I looked at, I went through the last, next four years of cars, three point one million dollars and the four years after that, or trucks, I should say, two point five million, that would be, what is it, six hundred and fifty thousand, so we have enough money for four years already and if we go at six hundred thousand or whatever, maybe next year or the year after, whatever, we'll still stay on track, I mean, I don't know, I know we said we wanted to get ahead, I'm not sure how far we were trying to get ahead, I asked you last night, I, you know, I told you I'd be asking you this, the reason I'm asking is because, don't transfer the two hundred and fifty from the general fund, leave it in the tourism, try and help that account out. And since we're, I don't know, I feel we're comfortable enough, I'm not sure how you guys feel, you can, if we don't transfer the whole hundred and seventy-five from the general fund, leave that in and to make up that seventy-five thousand, just shrink the water and sewer by seventy-five thousand because that fund also looked to be okay, we still get the two hundred and fifty back into the general fund. Just something I was kinda, I was playing with the numbers, just to help out that tourism fund, I don't know how everybody feels about that, but I figure we gotta do something. And, and then the following year's budget, then we would, naturally, we didn't get that full test that we wanna do for the Prairie Fest and whatnot, but that'll be a budget for next year anyways because it's for June of twenty twenty, right?
Director Wilson?
Sure, um, yeah, obviously, there's, there's a lot going on there.
Sorry, lost on the back.
Yeah, I guess we'll kinda go in, in reverse order, so you are correct, you know, that, I guess, the Prairie Fest test with the, the larger band or whatever, since it's not occurring this year, if, if that were still the intent to have that, that would be next year's Prairie Fest, so Prairie Fest twenty-five.
It would be the next.
Which would be the next budget year, correct. Relative to the SURF program, yeah, I did take a look and, you know, we never specifically had a, a number or a target, it wasn't like we wanna be at this number. What has kind of happened over the past couple of years, when I, I kinda took a deeper dive into it today, was a few different things. When we first started the SURF program, the vehicle replacement cycle for a number of the vehicles was shorter than it is today, like, the squad cars originally were, you know, three years, now, you know, thanks to, you know, be it, you know, the new chief, be it the garage keeping things going, be it just the vehicles being different, those replacement cycles are four or five years now. So, yes, the formula is accounting for that, but the first few years, there was some accelerated funding on some of those and now they're being stretched out as time has gone on. So, we are doing a good job, again, you know, Mr. Buzz is checking the garage, they're doing a great job of keeping the fleet going, so we've been able to keep vehicles longer, which doesn't necessitate having such a high, high balance in there per se. Additionally, over the past few years, I'm sure you've all driven by car lots, there's no cars, so we actually haven't been able to obtain all of the cars we've needed over the past few years. One of the vehicles we just got, I think it was a utilities vehicle, I think we ordered, what, two years ago, two and a half years ago, and we just got it in a month ago. So, there, there's still some, some stress in the marketplace. That being said, you know, I think we are at a place where if we wanted to take a pause or dial back the funding from the general fund to the SURF fund for a couple of years, I think we could do that and, and still be comfortable and be in a good position relative to the SURF fund. So, if we were to, you know, reduce that transfer by hundred and fifty thousand or the full one seventy-five, then we could do a commensurate production of the transfer from the tourism fund to the general fund for that same amount. At the same time, this is something the manager and I have talked about a little bit as well, you know, if you look at the transfer of the general fund from the tourism, it was at two fifty, if you look at the transfer from the CIP, it's at, you know, one fifty or two hundred. That's an eight million dollar a year program that has less of an administrative transfer than the tourism fund does. So, you know, in, in thinking through this, you know, I think a recommendation, just on a, on a permanent day one basis, would be to just knock fifty thousand of that transfer off anyways or regardless of the, the.
You lost me, I'm sorry.
The tourism fund, just, just regardless of, of the situation, that could go from two fifty to two hundred if we wanted to increase the, the CIP transfer by another fifty thousand to kind of right-size those. So, if you, if you were to do, you know, a reduction of the transfer from general fund to SURF, let's just say, let's just freeze them, say one fifty.
One seventy-five.
Oh, you would do the whole thing, one seventy-five, sure, we'll do one seventy-five. Would then offset the, the transfer from tourism to the general fund by one seventy-five, which would leave seventy-five thousand, just working through the math.
Right.
If you were to then realign fifty thousand of that seventy-five from tourism to the CIP, CIP still would, would still be fine, would still be whole, that would just leave twenty-five thousand dollars. The general fund right now has, without the, any changes, has a surplus of twenty-four seven sixty-one, so if you wanted to, you would have to increase the transfer from the water fund by another twenty-five thousand dollars, which we, which we could do and then you could zero that out and, it's okay.
So, what I was trying to do, two hundred and fifty thousand, don't transfer anything from tourism, just to lower this debt, I'm looking at a hundred and seventy-five and then just another seventy-five from the water fund going to the SURF, instead it would go to the general fund, that gives us the two fifty if you were gonna transfer from here. I'm just, it's, that's why I called last night, right? I don't see it crippling if we take out two hundred and fifty thousand from the SURF, so instead of six ninety, you're only gonna be, what was it, four, you know, four forty, right?
Director?
Yeah, Lisa, I would just say, I mean, if we're gonna try to realign things, I would just recommend doing fifty of that last seventy-five from CIP and then you could do the other twenty-five, the water, swinging that around, but if, if you wanna do it all, the other seventy-five from water, that's fine, but just, my recommendation would be fifty and twenty-five, but, but you could do the seventy-five, that's fine too.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, I tried to call you, but the mayor had the line tied up.
What time did you try to call?
Secondly, I feel like I'm at a shell game right now and the cups are moving around and I gotta guess under what cup the money is, so, maybe in layman's terms, you could explain what we were just talking about.
Director Wilson?
Sure.
Cause I may or may not need to ask the questions I need if that solved the problem.
Ooh, so I'll start there first. I, I think it, I think at some point, we would have to, theoretically, we're gonna have to go back to funding the SURF, so we're gonna have to go back to some transfer from the tourism fund, but we could, we could probably do this for a, a few years to, to give us time to kind of work through, you know, the, some of the, the special events, what, what we want Prairie Fest to be, you know, what we want some of those other things to be, so I think it would, would give us the time to work through those questions and, and get to an answer with, you know, the, the issue with the bigger band, it was gonna be this year, but now it's gonna be next year, so, I think that'll, that'll, that'll give us time to get to that point, because with the shell game.
Maybe that's not the proper way to say that.
No, no, that's fine.
I didn't mean to imply anything, that's just how I felt, like.
It, yeah, so, so the, the general fund, you know, has, they're, they're transfers, but they're reimbursements for services. So, instead of budgeting salaries out of the tourism fund and the sanitation fund and the metro fund and the water fund, you know, having the payroll system break it out to five different funds every time, we budget all of, the hundred percent of the salaries for the employees out of their, out of their native department or division. We then, you know, transfer back in from these other funds to reimburse the general fund for those costs that otherwise would be broken out and allocated to those funds. So, the number's gonna be really the same, kind of whichever way you wanna do it. What the mayor's suggesting is that just from a transfer standpoint, we just change the mix of those transfers. So, as we're dialing back the transfer into the general fund from one fund, that's gonna affect the bottom line of the general fund, so we have to find some increase in a transfer or the decrease in another transfer to compensate that. So, you know, think of a lock, you know, that the ship's going through, we, we still have to be here, so if you raise this one up, this one can go down, you know, vice versa, you know, or a teeter totter or, you know, a lock, you know, as you're, as you're pushing it around, you still have to get to the same number, but it's just what that mix is gonna look like to get to that number. So, all the mayor is suggesting and, and what his question was, and I think my answer's probably way more involved than he thought it was gonna be, is just to, to change that mix or change that allocation to make sure that the tourism fund has the available fund balance. balance become positive, start to pay back the general fund, and then give it time to see where everything's going to shake out in a few years. And then the general fund is still going to be whole due to how those transfers are realigned. And then the SURF fund, because of the things that I had mentioned earlier with the longer replacement life, additional funding and whatnot, is still going to be in a safe place. So, really, by doing what I said, and I can draw that up and send that to everybody, you know, later, because I'm sure everybody's following the flow.
I've got all the arrows right here.
Yeah. You know, everybody's going to theoretically be whole and in a good place. And then also, like I said, provide the time and the funding to answer the questions in the tourism fund over the next couple of years from a special event standpoint.
Okay, so, I think I'm with you, which leads me to my, what was going to be a couple of my original questions. And one, all that being said, we have one full-time employee being budgeted out of the tourism fund. And, you correct me if I'm wrong, one of the new people are going to be, half of their salary is going to be allocated to that, too. Am I correct in assuming that?
Director Wilson?
Sure. So, the one full-time employee in the tourism fund is the dial-a-ride driver, which was the expanded level item last year. That's the only salary that's budgeted directly out of the tourism fund. To your question about the half of the salary of the new employee, whatever, that's baked into that $250,000 transfer for the admin salary reimbursement. So, the salaries for, you know, the special events, marketing, personnel, a significant portion of their salary is in that 250,000 portion, about half of the new employee, their salary is in there. And then some of the overtime for public works, police, et cetera, is in there. And then just the general administration of the tourism fund, so, you know, technically a portion of my salary, you know, 3%, 4%, 5% is baked in there, a little bit of the manager's time, you know, CD for viewing permits for tents and things like that. So, there's a bunch of other minor personnel costs baked in there. That's why I said about breaking it out, you know, kind of blowing up the payroll system. But, did that answer your question?
Oliver?
Okay, so the follow-up is, are we legally locked into this fund? Why is it we can't fund this with other money? I mean, when I was told at the start of the year, when we were at a negative balance, I never really knew that. So, somewhere, we've been moving the money around, or placeholder, or one of those boxes, much like the social security fund, it's got index cards, IOUs in it.
Mayor, please.
So, why can't we just take some money from another, it's, this roundabout, I understand what you're saying, right, that you want to apply it to the account that it's coming from and all that, but there should be some more, or at least the ability to take revenue from, we'll call it the general fund, to do items for tourism?
Mayor, please.
I got a follow-up on that, all right. So, we...
I don't get Brad's answer.
No, no, well, I just want to make a comment.
Okay.
So, we, the video gaming, we moved back, that's 235,000, and for this year, because we moved it back right away, it's 38,000. But the previous years, that money wasn't going in there, remember, we had it?
Right, no, no, and I get that. All I'm saying is structurally, why can't, right, we're limited to that fund, and it seems like we siphon off money out of that fund for other things. I'm not saying they're wrong or we're doing anything bad, it's just like we deplete the fund, so there's next to nothing there. At the same time, we want to be more robust in the offerings to the community and the residents, and what we're doing just seems like a lot of work to keep moving the ball around under the cups. That's all I'm saying, as opposed to just a standard every year, whatever, from the general fund.
Director Wilson?
I'm not an accountant, so I'm going to throw that in.
Sure. Yeah, so, I'm trying to, what order I want to answer this in? So, I guess, I guess I'll start with high level and say you're correct, and then we'll work down.
I'm done.
Work down from there, yeah.
Motion to approve.
So, the tourism fund money can only be used for certain things to promote tourism within the city, which is what we're doing by way of special events, the economic development stuff, you know, trying to bring people into town. So, to your point then about why can't we do, spend other monies for tourism things? Yes, you're correct. But you can. But the state of the general fund with the $24,000 surplus doesn't really allow that flexibility, per se. That being said, the multi-layered realignment of things that I mentioned about five minutes ago is effectively doing what you were just saying, by freeing up that money by eliminating that transfer to the general fund. You're then freeing that money up to stay in the tourism fund to do those things within the tourism fund. So, you're effectively accomplishing the same goal by...
But only for a couple of years, based on what you said, right?
Correct. Correct.
So, I...
So, I guess I'm looking for a more permanent, straight-line, easy-to-read, you know, I was taken back when I found out that we were in a negative balance, and like, okay, so why was that a thing for two years, or whatever the timeframe was? This isn't picking on anybody, this is just, you know, trying to understand the numbers and going, okay, so I'm looking at, think we're in good shape, and then you're telling we were negative as we're trying to, you know, add more to the events, you know?
Mayor, please.
Do you want to answer first?
Yeah, and I think, so I think I said this, you know, would buy some time, three to four years, to kind of see what special events is going to look like, what Prairie Fest is going to look like in a few years after the test year, whatever. So, I think, I mean fundamentally, again, you're probably right. I think, you know, in probably four years, we're probably going to be having a similar conversation. However, in the four years, I think things are going to be different in the general fund, things will probably be different with special events and some of the other funding sources. And I think, at that time, I think there will be the ability to have a more bright-line solution for this problem, once, you know, be it some other businesses come online, some other tax revenue comes in, things of that nature. I think, I think in a few years, there is going to probably be a more significant, bright-line solution to this problem than we have today. We just have to get from here to there over the next couple of years.
So, just my last, my last follow-up, and I'll, this was an excellent exchange. So, the bright line is obviously income, so this is all related to just allocation of income, and we had more things to pay for, and thus, less ability to move funds to the tourism.
Director Wilson?
That's probably a fair assessment.
That's it.
Well, I was just going to say, and I think you previously said as well that you can either increase income or lower expenses, right, because they have the same...
Now you're talking my language.
They have the same net effect, and so that's...
Get it all opened up, I got it.
Yeah, that's kind of where we're at. And I think, at the end of that three or four-year window, I think there'll be a brighter, brighter line, clearer path forward.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, I was just going to follow up. So, as businesses come online and sales tax weaken, delegate some sales tax to go to this fund, which would take care of it in the future, instead of the transfers in and out. And utility taxes, once those two data centers come online, right, we can use some of that money at that point, or is that not right?
Director Wilson?
Yeah, I mean, technically, from an accounting standpoint, you would just continue to reduce that transfer. The tourism fund technically wouldn't be allowed to have sales tax, but you could reduce that, the transfer, which again, that's what I was saying, by reduce expenses or increase revenue, has the same net effect. So...
Yeah, so, at the whole beginning of that conversation, when the mayor started talking, you talked about the SURF fund, and you said it took two extra years to get a vehicle. So, personally, I think maybe we need to look at that SURF fund, because since that vehicle took two extra years, I haven't heard public works or police say, hey, we're missing a car, we can't put a patrol officer on the street because we don't have a vehicle. So, I think, you know, what has shown since COVID is, I mean, we've had vehicles take three years to get here, and in the meantime, I've never heard anybody say, we couldn't plow the streets because we're missing a vehicle. I haven't heard the police department say, we couldn't have a police officer on the road because we're missing a police car, because we don't have our new police car. So, personally, I think at the SURF fund, we should look at extending the lives even longer, because obviously, you know, that shows us that doesn't, even if we wait two extra years for that vehicle, we're not in trouble. I mean, we're still working, operating. Is that not correct?
Yeah. We're still operating the vehicles we have, we don't turn them in until we get the new ones. And how many vehicles are we missing right now? Do we, is it one, two, three? I'm just...
Yeah, I'll offer Mr. Lang in one moment, but, you know, part of that, and like I said at the original, at the onset, yeah, we have found that we are able to extend the life of those vehicles a little bit. You know, you will see, and I don't have a specific example, but some of the maintenance accounts, to keep the vehicles going, have increased over the last couple of years, because the vehicles are getting older, which again, is a testament to the garage for keeping the fleet running. But you are correct, though, and I think, you know, we built the fleet schedule this year, and some of them are even vehicles that we didn't get this year, that we've just pushed back another year. So, but to your point, though, I think that's always something we're looking at, and we can, I can work with Mr. Lang in the garage and try to take a little bit of a deeper dive on that. How many we're missing, how was it, three or four?
About four.
Yeah, there's about four vehicles that are either on order or are about to be ordered that we're waiting on right now.
So, but with those four missing vehicles, do we have staff missing a car? I mean, do we have people that can't go out and fix the street because we're missing a truck, we don't have a truck for another two years?
Director?
We've actually been having guys Uber around town, so it's easier, so you may see the Uber account way up this year. No, like, exactly. Like Director Wilson said, we hang on to the existing vehicle until we get the new vehicle, and then we surplus the old vehicle. So, those vehicles are still in operation, you just, like he said, may see those maintenance costs go up. We try to get out of vehicles, the SURF is reassessed annually, we don't just replace the vehicle because it's due on the SURF, it's assessed annually for its condition across a few metrics, and, and I forgot my other point there. That's that.
Any follow-up? Pretty good.
Thank you. That's just my, I mean, again, when we get to the SURF fund, I think we just need to look at that.
Thank you. Mayor, please.
So, my question is, are we going to eliminate this 250,000 transfer to the general fund? Because we need a motion to do that, otherwise it doesn't happen. Correct, Brad? Is that my right, or...
What was the very last part you said?
Are we making a motion to eliminate the 250,000 transfer? At the same time, then, whether it's from the 175, from the general fund to the SURF, we don't do that, and the other 75, I know you were rattling off a bunch of stuff, I'm not quite sure all the numbers, but, but I just want to get to 250 so the general fund stays where it's at, at the 24,000 surplus, or whatever you said at the beginning.
Yeah. I can make the proposed motion. My only question, I know you'd said the water fund, again, you know, I think staff would recommend realigning 50,000 from the CIP, so if that's okay, that'll be in my motion, if that pleases the council.
I'm just trying to get to 250.
Very good. Okay. So, here would be the proposed motion, and Julie, I apologize in advance for this. Or she'll be to eliminate the $250,000 transfer from the tourism fund to the general fund. Eliminate the $175,000 transfer from the general fund to the SURF fund. Increase the transfer from the CIP fund to the general fund by 50,000.
Increase, I got that. SURF, increase.
SURF, decrease, right? I'm trying that.
What do you have so far, Julie?
Uh, eliminate 250,000 transfer on tourism and general fund, realign 75,000 from the general fund to the SURF.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Increase.
Increase, sure. Yeah. Increase the CIP transfer to the general fund by 50,000. And increase the water fund transfer to the general fund by $25,000.
Mayor, please.
So, you're increasing from the water, water and sewer fund, right?
Yes, yes. And also, one last one, Julie. Decrease the transfer from the water and sewer fund to the SURF fund by $25,000.
And then it's just the 250, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. I would point out, though, that, you know, try to, this is on a, say, a temporary basis? I mean, this, we're going to have to look at this, this is just for this budget, right?
Strictly for this budget.
Or some other amount that might be on something.
Alderman, Jacob.
So, when you talk about water funds, not going to affect the water rates, is it?
Director Wilson?
No.
Thank you.
Alderman, Harwood?
So, is this in keeping with our policy, or violating any of our policies?
No. And by doing this, this is, you know, on the path to a plan, so we're, yeah, we're okay.
Alderman, Jacob.
I'm good.
Once we get our first cannabis shop in town, I'm assuming we could use that money here and for the water fund? The tax revenue from that?
Yeah, I don't know that I'm prepared to answer that question tonight, so...
Okay, so do we need to vote on that motion?
Yeah.
We need a motion, right?
I think Brad...
I read the motion.
What Brad said.
But we need a motion or a second there.
I make the motion that Brad said.
Need a second.
I'll second it. Oliver?
Yes.
Alderman, Curial?
No.
Alderman, Messina?
Yes.
Alderman, Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman, Sosmski?
No.
Alderman, Ames?
Yes.
Alderman, Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Alderman, Catall?
Yes.
Okay.
Real quick, before we go through this, we did, just want to give a quick verbal update. Last year, having made dial-a-ride that full-time position, Public Works, they did expand the hours of dial-a-ride. They said that the hours have been well-received by the riders. Ridership was up slightly from the previous year, and according to, excuse me, Mr. Lang and his team, there are now four new unique riders to the program that we've picked up over the last year. Total ridership, total rides this year, look like they're going to be just under 1,700 individual rides this year, up from about 1,650 the year before, so picked up, you know, plus or minus 50 rides and four new unique riders. And I believe had no incidents where there was not a driver, so that the program was able to continue on in a smooth manner throughout the year. So, just wanted to give that update from last year, so... Getting into the tourism fund, line items here, decrease in personnel, so like the healthcare, basically, we had to make an assumption last year of what plans they were going to take, and they picked a different one. So, we're able to, with the, we're able to kind of... to kind of right-size that budget item this year. And then the increase in other, which related to special events, which I know has been covered on various numerous multiple occasions. Moving forward, we have the manager not recommended sheet for seasonal decorations.
True.
Which, which was.
Yeah, and this one, I would recommend we greenlight this. We talked, we've been talking about upping our game on Christmas decorations for years, and I'm not sure when this came off the budget. But, I mean, we all agreed many years ago that every year we're going to do this. So for 20, you know, I mean, we've, we're spending more on Prairie Fest and on other things. You know, I think we need to. I guess it's a motion, make this a green?
Bet you disagree?
No, to make it a green, a green sheet. It's okay. So we spend the money.
Alderman, hardwoods?
Yes.
Alderman, Currielli?
No.
Alderman, Messina?
Yes. Sorry, yes.
Alderman, Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman, Sosmarski?
No.
Alderman, Ames?
No.
Alderman, Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Alderman, Catalano?
Yeah. It's five, three, right? Five, three. It's five, three. It's five, three, right?
Five, three.
Five, three?
Five, three, yes.
Moving on to Narcotics Swarfature Fund. As you all may recall, at the council meeting or two ago, the city recently acquired K-9 cash. So the costs in this year's FY25 budget are those costs to continue, the continued maintenance and training for the new K-9 units. TIF one. Really, the only, the only thing of much note that's, that's different from previous years is the transfer, the 4.4 million that is for the water tower. You may recall at the committee meeting where the water tower was discussed, some of those numbers were a little bit larger than 4.4 million. Whatever the cost of the water tower is, that transfer is going to be commensurate with that cost. So I believe a couple of the options had with the contingency, you know, 6 million, depending on which option it was. This transfer, since the TIF fund is going to be paying for the water tower, it would be that number. This was just the engineer's estimate at the time we prepared the CIP, so that's why that's presented there. But like I said, if it goes up a little bit, this transfer will go up to be in accordance with the cost for that, for the water tower.
Mayor, please.
When is that water tower coming forward?
March 28.
Okay. And I know I didn't ask it at the meeting, but I asked, I asked you, Jeff, hopefully you'll get an answer. Instead of behind the, one of the locations was behind this building, why wouldn't we have put a West of our building over there in the commercial?
Yeah, we'll, we'll cover that in the number eight on the 28th. We are looking into that.
I'm just curious.
Not looking good. Yeah?
Question. Can't let the tower go. Just was thinking why we're doing that, looking at the 4.4, that's going to wind up 4.6, whatever, 4.8. And since Ellen's back in the room, is there any way we could leave the existing tower and build a secondary smaller tower? And would that reduce cost?
Potentially, that is an option. The goal is to have your average day's usage in the air. So right now, we have about half our day's usage. So given that the existing tower is only 100,000 gallons, we would probably only want to reduce it to maybe a 500,000 gallon tank, in which case you're not saving much cost there. But it is an option that we could look at.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, it just came to me when we were talking about this. That's a lot of money for, for a tank in the air.
Right. The question, so we have cell towers on the old one. Do we lose all those licensing agreements, or? Or what, what happens with that?
They would be transferred to the new tower. If we were to rebuild at the existing site, those antenna would have to be taken down and relocated, potentially at our cost. I haven't looked at the details of our franchise agreements. But then the new antennas would be relocated to the new tower.
And if we tried to do that with the smaller tower, the, the new, the old tower would still have to be painted at that, or cathodic process and all that?
It would be two assets to maintain going forward.
Right. Okay.
TIF two, not a lot going on there right now. I think you all kind of know what's going on with the TIF that we're sitting in right now, specifically, you know, the former SBT property. I know that's working its way through, and, you know, we're obviously waiting for other developments, but I think we all kind of know the condition of that one right now.
Alderman, hardwood?
The contractual services, that's legal to keep the fund in order, right? That you replace all the 50,000?
Directable.
Yeah, so far, it's just, they have been legal bills for various things. Sure. Thank you. Moving on to TIF three. So right now, with TIF three, it's open. There's not a lot going on in there, but I believe there's some items that CDC soon, and then committee council soon, that would probably help spur this on. So right now, TIF three, it's a little bit of a holding pattern, like I said, until some of those things get moving forward. That is the end of the special revenue section. Capital projects funds, again, we have the general capital projects, which we affectionately just call the CIP, and then the land acquisition fund. So going to the general capital projects fund, again, this was discussed at January 25th, January 25th council meeting, uh, committee meeting, excuse me. We did, after that meeting, send out the list of those couple of changes that were made. One of the changes, you know, that was made were some of those, just kind of the discrepancy errors between some of the numbers. Just let me look at the list here. Yeah, then we also, between the time of that meeting, I was prepared in the meeting, Mr. Lang got some bid numbers for, I believe, the Central Avenue, that we were able to roll in there. We updated the ward listing for the streetlights. There was a couple of formatting errors. And then at that time, we did increase the budget for the park from 25 to 50,000. And then there were a couple of just syntax things that we corrected. So it has been discussed, but I don't know if there's any other, any other changes to the CIP that might be coming up.
Alderman, can't allow them?
The rear yard drainage, did we increase that? From 3,000 to?
I don't believe we did at that time, because we were going to talk about and revamp or look at the program overall. So I think it was something that was discussed, but if the revamping of the program leads to that, then that would be fine.
Then you see the numbers here, they went up. So that's what, it's in the budget right now, what they can, you know, what they can use, or?
Please.
12,000? That's what we do every year.
Yeah, that's been the number for the past, the past few years. Yeah. So but if the, if the mix changes, obviously we'll leave that, and then we'll kind of reassess that in next year's CIP.
Mayor, please.
Brad, so in the utility tax revenue here, capital projects, that's not the same utility tax that's in the general fund, right? What's the difference?
It's an allocation between the two funds. So it's technically the same, it's just allocated between the general fund and the capital projects fund.
Wait, so I'm just curious. Is it 875 plus 345? And then there's utility, or, right. So the general fund line is 345, and here in the capital projects, it's 875. Is that 875 plus 345?
Correct.
Okay, okay. That's what I, that's what I thought, but I just want to make sure I'm not missing something.
Yeah.
Alderman, Jacob?
What's citywide initiatives? Is that, what does that exactly entail? Saw one year with like 551,000.
Director Wilson?
So the, yeah, so in years past, a lot of the rear yard drainage, the facade program, the Elgin O'Hare, the noise, economic development, all of those were kind of lumped into that citywide initiatives line item. With the past couple of years, just from a tracking and a transparency standpoint, we've been breaking those budgets out, kind of limiting what's actually in there. It started actually back a couple of years ago in the strategic plan. You know, it started with like the senior grass cutting and a couple of other things, where it was a citywide program that council wanted staff to launch. So that's why we called it a citywide initiative. It made sense. This particular year, that 65,000 is for land acquisition of a flood property, should the, the match of the funding become available for that. That's the only thing that's in there this year. Back, that 51,000, that actually had some debt service and then land acquisition numbers in it, that just couldn't be broken out the way it's structured. And that's why going forward, like I said, you'll see those numbers in that citywide kind of going down. Just again, for clarity and transparency, we started to break that stuff out, so it was getting to be a little clunky, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is land acquisition fund. So this is the fund that ultimately, with the, the land acquisition, that $8 million flowed through here. The only expenses as of now, expected for next year, are the interest payments on that line of credit. However, it is expected, anticipated that late 2024, early 2025, the city would be doing a bond issue, and the land acquisition fund would be reimbursed for those costs based upon an inducement ordinance that the council passed some number of months ago, to reimburse the city for certain costs relating to this project. So while that money is, you know, going to be going out the door in the short term, like I said, when we issue that debt, that is going to get reimbursed back to the city.
Alderman, Hardy Woods?
It'd be a new question, but what does that save us on the interest from that loan? Changing over to a bond, is it saving us money on debt free service? Like, how does that work?
Director Wilson?
Sure. I mean, the, I guess the biggest change is the line of credit had a finite life of three years, where the bonds would be able to have a life of 20 years. So we're going to spread that out and then wash that against theoretically, a new project versus just the general fund, so.
Is there a difference in interest rate?
There would be, yes, yeah. Yeah, obviously, don't know what that is, because we won't know what it is until we issue the bonds. But typically, when we issue the bonds, we're issuing, you know, below, you know, right around current market rates, where the agreement we have now pegs the new overnight rate, the replaced LIBOR, plus a cert, plus a percentage. So, yes, we'll, again, we can't tell you what that is until we actually issue the bonds. But yeah, there would be a savings on the interest cost over that, as well as being able to spread that life out.
And you're experiencing something significant, or just?
I guess it depends on how you define significant. Yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, I don't want to back myself in the corner, but I mean, it's probably going to be, it'll be one to two points, so it's.
That's all, I'm just curious.
Alderman, hardwood?
Yeah, were there no costs or expenses related to that?
Director Wilson?
What's that? Apologies. That, if you, in the binder, if you go to the land acquisition tab, go to page 102, yeah, there is $250,000 of expected interest costs in there. Apologies for that not making it onto the slide.
Apologies.
Alderman, Hardy Woods?
What, what year are we expected to start seeing some revenue from this place?
Director Wilson?
Yeah, between two to three, depending on the build-out timeline from the developer.
Two to three years from today?
Correct, yeah. It's there, oh, it's not there. Moving on to the enterprise funds. Again, commuter parking lots, sanitation, water and sewer fund. Moving into the commuter parking lot, really, it's the same as it's been the past couple of years relative to the maintenance and cleaning and upkeep of, of the train station. And then the interfund transfer to the general fund is part, part the reimbursement transfer, and then part continued reimbursement for the loan to resurface the lot a number of years ago.
Alderman, Jacob?
Yeah, just as far as revenues, prior to like COVID and stuff, what was our revenue that we were getting a while, like a long time ago? It's been quite a while.
Was.
Director Wilson?
Yeah, I would have to, I could, I could get that for you real quick, but it probably at least another 30,000 to 40,000 more than what it is now. Almost double, yeah. Not, not quite double, but almost double.
Alderman, Hardy Woods?
When's the last time we raised the rate for the parking at the commuter station?
Director Wilson?
Yeah, I have to look, but I'd say at least 10 years ago, probably. At least, yeah, probably at least 10 years ago.
Is that something we can add as a future item to talk about?
Sure. Thank you. Sanitation fund, just the rate of the contract with Flood Brothers is going up commensurate to what was in the agreement. And we're in the, kind of the part of the runout of that where we're tapering off that interfund transfer from the sanitation fund to the general fund, just due to the pressure of the rates versus the revenue at this point. So you will conveniently, in a slide or two, see an increase to the general fund and the water fund by 50,000. So that was always kind of planned. Over time, was, was as that kind of tapered off, that was going to be the realignment of those transfers. So this isn't something that's shocking or concerning, at least from a staff standpoint. This is always kind of, kind of the plan.
I have a question about the comment about the contract going up per the rate. So for the Wooddale for Greener Tomorrow, I know part of the terms of the contract was that they were going to pay for the recycling. They have done that, correct, and supplied additional dumpsters and trash receptacles for our events. I know that was part of their contract. I just. I know that was part of their contract, I just want to make sure that that in fact happened, and we're not being charged for that from them?
See, I would have to defer to Mr. Lang and Mr. Silva on that, but I know they do have the part of it for the brush collection, which they're reimbursing us for, I believe it's the $5,000 for costs related to porta potties and garbage and whatnot, specifically for Prairie Fest and some of the other special events, that has been paid as well. I'm not sure if there's any agreement on the actual dumpsters or whatnot, but I know those contractual items are being met, but I have to defer for the other.
Yeah, they provide us a certain number of dumpster swapouts each year for Public Works, and as Director Wilson mentioned, they also take care of our special events for us, too.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Jacob?
On the charges for services, sanitation services, that seems like it's going down. Is that, is that, I mean, that's a revenue to us, so.
Director Wilson?
Yeah, I'd have to dig into the details, but it's, since we haven't raised the rate in a number of years, it's oddly not as consistent as you think it should be. A lot of it has to do with some combination of final meter reads, meter timing, also, as more people apply for the senior discount, we bill out less, we get charged a little bit less, but really, that's what you're seeing there, is that number is starting to come down a little bit. Because there, we have the senior discount, which is the income-based one, which is 62 or over with the income thresholds, but Flood Brothers has a program where if you're 65, regardless of your income, it's a 15% discount off of the bill. So what we've seen is that that number has continued to go up as the population ages, and so that is putting a little downward pressure on the revenue, because we're literally billing out less money due to the additional senior discounts that we're handing out.
Thank you. Please continue.
Sure, just going into the water and sewer funds. Summary of the revenues here, you know, the charges for service, you know, reflective of the new user, the cleaners being online for a full year. If you look at the revenue projection from last year, it's a little bit down, but that's, we were assuming they'd be online for the full year, but their project took a little bit longer than they had thought it was going to, which affected their, their opening and their water usage. So this year is more reflective of the full year's worth of revenue from them. The miscellaneous, we are working on a federal grant to help with the Edison Road Water Main Project, that's reflective in the miscellaneous line item there. And then again, you know, you've heard this before, but the transfers related to the water tower. Moving on in the operating departments, we'll get into more minutia on each of them here, but this is what they look like. And then, you know, the increase in capital, again, I just, so I just said it, Edison Road Water Main and the water tower are really what's driving that roughly $5.8 million increase in the capital spent this year. Getting into the utilities division, numeric, the commodities increase is due to the water purchase. We also baked in what we assume to be a little bit of a price increase in Dubage Water Commission. They haven't announced it yet, I don't know, I believe they've heard it from the City of Chicago yet, City of Chicago's, I don't know, probably working on other things right now, not sure, but they haven't announced that yet, but we are anticipating something. The interfund transfer, as I alluded to before, kind of that realigning between the sanitation and the water fund, it was 50,000, but it's split between utilities and sanitation, so that's why it's not the full 50 right there. And then others decreased just due to depreciation, as assets are being changed out, the depreciation or added to the system, the depreciation number does change a little bit from a year-to-year basis, so nothing to be alarmed with there. In the written pros, moving on to the wastewater division. Increasing contractual services are related to laboratory fees, as well as insurance premiums, so again, the workers' comp and property casualty insurance. To the mayor's point, that is, it's the same line item, just in the water fund and the general fund, but the premiums are split between 75 in the general fund, 25% in the water fund, based upon, based upon claim history and budgetary allocations. Again, the other side of that interfund transfer, which was offset a little bit by a decrease to the SURF fund, which again, that's going to change a little bit after the motion from a few minutes ago. And again, others related to depreciation, again, just realigning and recognizing those costs.
Just for future, on the lift stations, I know we've replaced a few, where do we stand with all our lift stations? Not for tonight, but we can get an update, we can get an update later, not tonight.
Regarding line item for postage, 44002. Can you elaborate on what we actually spend that much postage on?
Water bills, the mailing of the utility bills. Yeah, the actual bills, yeah. And the notices, but yeah, it's the bills, yeah.
And the notices, I figured, okay. But even just the actual water bills?
Correct.
Have, have we thought about, and we've been trying to automate people, but I know I'm online, but I also still get a paper bill? Have we thought of ways to, like, is there a better way to do this?
Yeah, so every month, we get more and more people receiving the email bill. You do have the option to suppress the paper copy, so there are some people that get both. But there is an option to suppress the paper copy if you didn't want to receive the paper copy anymore and just receive the email bill.
I'll see you after this.
Okay, sure. I mean, theoretically, you know, yeah, theoretically, I mean, we could do another reminder, either in the newsletter, social media, or even in the water bill itself, to sign up online. You know, we could, we could do that outreach, I'm sure, yeah.
Is that system turned over now? I know we were, Tyler was working on building it out, is it, are we good?
Director Wilson?
Sure, they have an upgraded version that we're probably going to be looking to move to, I suspect, after vacation, to probably late summer, early fall, just after, because there's another conversion we're having to work through right now, relative to our merchant processor. So after we get through that, then we don't want to launch a new program, you know, during vacation season for a couple of staff members, so once that's through, then we're going to launch the new, the new platform. So which is, we've seen it, demoed it, it actually is nicer and a little more user-friendly than the current one. The UI especially is a lot better.
Worth it.
Alderman Jacob?
Just a question on this other equipment, and I see we bought your 500, we only spent 250. What, does other equipment, it just doesn't fit into any of the other categories here, or what exactly is that?
Director Wilson?
I defer to Mr. Lang or Mr. Guerelli on what other equipment is in the wastewater division.
Thank you. It's any kind of equipment that they might need for utility division, for instance, they buy like a new impact gun set or something for water main breaks. Typically, for streets, we'll budget for a new weed whip or backpack blower, so anything that comes up that you weren't expecting that you might need to replace.
One of these last, for the clean water, 42.
To which one?
The increase in revenue by 138,000, I'm assuming, as you said, that was, that new business is coming online, but that doesn't even seem close to what they should be generating.
Director Wilson?
Yeah, so that's, I guess, the incremental increase for them being online for the full year. Just bear with me a second.
What was the projected use per day or weeks of that lead-in gallon?
Sure, we had ran models on a million, 2 million, and 3 million. So far, they had, after they got up and running, their average monthly usage, again, after they kind of got up and fully operational, has been about 1.75 million, has been their average consumption so far. And, that's for the store, yeah. Yeah, so your point, though, the 138, that's, again, that's them being online for an entire year. If you look at page 111 of the binder document, you know, you'll see the revenue went from 3.3, 3.4, and then now we're projecting 3.9 million in revenue. So if you really go back and look at the 22 and 23 actials versus what we're proposing them to use, that's really the, I guess, the true net effect of the impact of, of the cleaners.
On 111, what line item is that referring to?
Oh geez, my apologies. 110. Sorry, so basically, almost same number. So the top line, sale of water dash usage, the 35110. So you can see the 22 and 23, we're in the, you know, 34, 36, and now we're looking at 4.1. So that's, again, the incremental increase wasn't as great as you would think, because we had kind of baked, assumed that they were going to be on for a full year.
Yeah, it just looked better than what, it just looked better than what was pretty long.
Thank you.
Moving on to the capital, again, discussed January 25th, and again, the increase, Edison Road Water Main, Water Tower. The internal service fund, the SURF fund, obviously, this is going to be, oh, the revenue side's going to be different, the expense side, we're still looking to purchase, you know, 856,000 hours of vehicles. You know, I know Alderman Jacob had asked, and Mr. Lang kind of answered, yeah, we do review this annually, so as we go through this next year, you know, we'll continue to look for ways to, to make sure we're, you know, getting our, the best bang for our buck, and hopefully also the, you know, vehicle availability becomes, becomes better going forward. The fiduciary funds, again, like I said, this is money that's not really the city's, but we have to account for it in our books, you know, the police pension fund, that's, you know, the monies for the pensions, and again, that's managed by the police pension fund, not the city, but again, we have to present on that. They are having some really good market returns last year and so far this year. So that's kind of where we're looking at right now with additional retiree payments and whatnot.
Alderman Artwood?
Thank you. Fred, so we're down five officers, would this number look different if we had five more employees working, paying into the fund? Does that affect?
To defer to our police pension, one of our, one of our two police pension board members in attendance tonight.
Yeah, so which specific number are you inquiring at?
So every, so we pay into the fund, right, to balance it. You guys pay into it as employees, right, you manage the fund, it earns money, and then we, the city balances out the difference to meet the numbers or percentages we're required to meet. So my question is, being five officers down, that's five officers that would be paying into the fund, theoretically, the math says reducing the amount the city would have to pay in, I'm just asking, that's a correct assumption?
Correct, the city side contributions are decreased from not contributing to those five officers that would normally be on staff.
Okay, thank you. Please continue.
Yeah, just real quick, I know, didn't the state take over this fund and they're managing it now, we no longer manage it?
So yes, with consolidation, the funds are now being managed by the state, however, the Wooddale Police Pension Fund was part of the lawsuit to fight consolidation. It was recently ruled by the Illinois Supreme Court, the consolidation is legal and can go forward, and the group of pension funds that we were involved with in the lawsuit is deciding whether to move that to the federal Supreme Court for review.
Yeah, so we're currently managing it then, until this lawsuit is finalized?
Yes, we are still currently managing our funds, we have not turned those funds over to the state, and we are seeing a pretty significant return on our investment compared to the returns the state has been seeing on their funds.
Now, with our fiscally great state of Illinois, if they get these funds, are they going to take this entire fund over and we wouldn't even have this in? I mean, we would have the budget, but you would have nothing to do with it then, or how does that work?
Yeah, if, if we decide to either not proceed to the Supreme Court, or we do proceed and ultimately lose, at that point, if we do lose, we'll be forced to turn our money over to the state, who will direct how those investments are managed. It will no longer be directed by the local Wooddale Police Pension Board.
Sorry, one final question, I mean, I'm assuming there's multiple municipalities that are doing this, it's not just one or two, is that correct, or?
If you're talking about continuing with the lawsuit, I believe it's a group, I believe it's a group of about 23 municipalities right now.
Sorry, I lied. Was that just DuPage County, or is that all of the state of Illinois?
No, it's 23 throughout the state of Illinois.
Go to the special service area, as I mentioned a while ago, the final debt payments on this are going to be in March of '25? No, '24. They're coming up, yes, March of this year. They're just on the last list of bills. And so at that point, all of the bonds for service areas 12, 13, and 14 will be paid off, and then we're going to wait a year to see if there's any property tax appeals, because if there are, and there's any refunds, then we would take them out of the special service area, the appeals, the refunds, and if there is no PTAB appeals, then we will go ahead and close this out, and then transfer in the 118,000 roughly back into the general fund. Close out the special service area fund, it will stay open in case a new special service area is ever established. But going forward, it's my expectation, like I said, unless a new SSA is established in the next 12 months, you will not be seeing this page for the foreseeable future. Save us a page and, you know, a couple of minutes and a budget tab, until another special service area is created.
Alderman Artwood?
Is there a reason that they can't question the tax levy prior to the closing of this? Is there a moratorium on challenging value?
Director Wilson?
So I'm not 100% certain on the, the ability to appeal, I know, really, like, if you're just doing it personally, there's a window in which you have to, timeframe when you have to appeal it, but some of the larger corporations, like in the industrial park, could have multi-year appeals open, so we would work with our attorney and the tax consortium to see if there's any open appeals.
I misunderstood when you made that statement, like, what you just said explicitly.
Alderman's remark.
No, Art just answered it, that's right.
All right, please continue.
Yeah, so unless there's any final questions, we just need a motion to approve the budget as amended.
So I'd make the motion.
I'm here.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Alderman Zasmerzki, do you have a question?
I didn't know Peter was running the meeting.
Alderman Artwood?
So is that as corrected, or?
As amended.
I'm getting old, and I'm all the way in the corner.
Okay, you have a call? Alderman Artwood?
Yes.
Alderman Ariely?
Yes.
Alderman Masina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Zasmerzki?
Yes.
Alderman Ains?
Yes.
Alderman Artwood?
Yes.
Alderman Kellerman?
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, CIT tip request, March 28, billable appraisal June or July of 2024. Are there any other items to be considered?
Just, just for the record, I know it was requested earlier, but the Metro Fair item.
Okay.
Just make sure that's noted for the, yeah.
Thank you.
I know the manager already had it, but just want to.
Nothing else? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. All favor?